All right, welcome this morning to the Board of County Commissioners meeting. As always, we'll start with a prayer reading or thought or the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll look at the audience to see if any would like to participate with us on that. Anybody for a prayer reading or thought or a Pledge of Allegiance? There's your chance Kyle.
I'll do the prayer.
Do the prayer, okay. I'll do the pledge then.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for this wonderful day. We're grateful for this country that we live in and the freedoms that we enjoy and the opportunity to gather together. We pray that we can be mindful of the sacrifices that have been offered for us to enjoy these freedoms and the importance of our laws in this great country and our values as we meet together in this public meeting. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. If you would stand, repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party's stance on the nation's individual liberty and justice.
And for note, we have Commissioner Ivy is on the phone with us this morning. All right, we'll look to our agenda. We've got a number of items on consent that are published on consent and regular agenda. We will move all items temporarily to the consent so that then we'll build our agenda and we'll take things off and everything that is left on will either be considered approved or ratified or adopted. So it's been asked that, looking at our published consent agenda, that items number one and two be continued for two weeks. If we could hold number five for action. Any others that are on the published consent agenda?
I didn't have any.
I don't either.
Okay. Moving to our published regular agenda, if we could hold number one. Number nineteen, twenty. And if we could continue number twenty-three, it was requested for April thirtieth. That's all right. Okay? Any others?
I have just a minor clarification on number ten, so maybe just hold for quick.
Okay. So number ten as well.
Perfect. I had, you've got nineteen and twenty, those are the ones I had, so that works.
Okay, great. All right, so all the rest of them are, again, approved, adopted, ratified as stated in our agenda. So we'll go back to number five. Number five is to approve or deny, that's the reason why I held that there's an action item that I think is requested there. And we usually always ask for when there's a permit fee waiver that there's the ability for them to come back and tell us how the event went and so forth. I don't have any problems with this, I just want to make sure that we're approving it and it's noted that we're approving it and that everything's met. They are a 501(c)(6) I think, or (c)(3), I can't remember but...
And I believe you do need to make findings.
And findings, yes.
I move that we approve item number five.
With the findings, that's in the best human interest.
The findings is in the best human interest of the county.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to approve number five as stated with the human interest factor involved there as well. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
That passes three zero, thank you. Okay, is Paul here? On number seven, there's two I'd like to talk about.
You said number seven.
Sorry, I was looking at, I don't know how that got on. Number one, it says seven down here and I just spotted that. Number one on our published regular agenda. The, is it Ghetto, Gato? There's one on there. Gito? I don't know how you pronounce the name. I'll stop trying.
I am with you.
There is, there was an assessment, I just wanted more information on it. Why was the assessment so much higher in 2015?
So this item, the assessment was sort of toggled back and forth between, there's a building on the property and it was assessed at one point as an equipment shed and then later as a detached garage, which is more valuable. In, so in 2015, that's when it was valued as a detached garage and then in 2016, and I don't know if he...
Was it a shed? Was it a shed or was it a garage?
Well, that's a good question. Well, it was valued as a garage in 2015 and then in 2016 it was changed back to a shed, I believe, is my understanding.
Okay.
And we can ask the assessor's office to look into this or we can get clarification or from them, from my point of view, this is a valuation issue. We're trying to reach back into 2015 over the valuation, I guess we, you know, and frankly, it's either a valuation issue or it's a factual issue and at either rate, we're really too late to get into those issues. Those are BOE questions really, but we're too late to get into those issues. As a Board of Commissioners, of course, you can adjust the tax if you find it in the best interest to adjust tax.
I appreciate you spotting this one out, Mr. Lee, because, but it seems like the fact pattern in the assessment already essentially states that the 2015 assessment was incorrect.
I think that's a fair interpretation of it, yeah. But it's too, yeah, which I don't...
And so if that is the case, that there's a glaring, kind of obvious, kind of fact problem, then I would be inclined to, you know, not worry about the deadline issue here and waive it. So that's my sense.
Okay, mine is somewhere the $200. I feel that we need to abate the $200.
Okay. And that's the difference between the two there, so...
Any other questions on that? I don't have any. Can I get more information on the, what's going on with the BMC West? They're saying they provided proof of certified mailing and we've got checks that made it through and other checks that didn't and they're saying that they have certified mail. Have we verified that? What's the story?
Well, yeah, so supposedly they sent two checks together. We don't doubt that we received one of the checks, but we didn't receive the other check. So they're claiming that we lost the second check, 1660. So there's really no way to, there really is no way to prove that there were two checks in the envelope. So the certified mail issue is not that, you can't really determine anything by the certified mail because, yeah, we did, we do acknowledge that we received the mail, but the question is what checks were in there.
We don't know that.
Yeah. Now, you might recall, it's been about a month, we had a similar situation and somebody said they had sent us three checks and it was the middle check that, the middle check number that was missing. And I recommended to the board that, yeah, we give them credit for sending that because it was a middle check, right? I mean, you know, in my mind, you know, if you send the, you know, check four fifty, four fifty-one, or four fifty-two, and four fifty-one is the missing one, that kind of made sense to me that, yeah, you probably sent that. But here there's two checks and we processed one and we didn't process the other one. Did we lose it? Did they not send it? There's really no way to know.
There are checks fifty-nine and sixty. There are checks fifty-nine and sixty.
Yep. Sixteen sixty and sixteen fifty, yeah, sixteen fifty-nine and sixteen sixty. I believe we processed check sixteen fifty-nine. I think they've been, their penalty and interest is $1,417 on that, on that other check not being processed. Treasurer's Office commented on here that, you know, county didn't make any mistakes here, that we didn't get the check.
And so what's, what is remaining is the fourteen seventeen? Everything else has been paid?
I don't know if they've paid...
It says three six nineteen was paid, the thirty-six thousand, two hundred and seventeen, seventy-seven.
Okay, yeah.
So the only thing that's out of balance right now is that fourteen seventeen?
Yeah, the penalty and interest for that second check, yeah.
I agree that there's no way on a certified check, all we're certifying is that we got it, right? We got the...
Yeah, we know we got mail from them.
We can't certify what...
Don't know what was in, you know, there's no way to certify what was in the envelope, right?
Right. Did, did they have an opportunity to respond to that? I see the comments here from the county.
No.
That provide proof, but is that just a note to us or did they get that with the opportunity to?
No. No, so they submitted their statement on the back there where they say that they sent the two checks and then we reviewed that and these, these comments are for me and for you.
Yeah. That's a difficult one, I don't know how you...
I don't know what that, like...
But, but I, perhaps they do have something, right? I mean, I think with the current fact pattern, it's, it's difficult to give them credit for that, but, you know, perhaps we could give them the opportunity to try to provide some, I don't know what they would come up with, but...
Right. If you'd like me to reach back out to them and ask them for something, I'm willing to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what, I would assume that they would, they would say we, you know, we certified mailed it so that we put it in the envelope as well and we don't put what's in the contents, you know, in there. I, I, it's, I don't know how you'd, how you'd work through that. One of the, one of the facts that's hard for me, though, is, is that we, you know, we did abate one in which we had it in the middle and, and this one's one right after the other.
That's my memory, anyway.
I mean, if that's true, and that probably sounds right to me, and now we have one, one right after the other. Looks like Ezra's got something.
Oh, yeah, so I think they've paid the full amount, the penalty and the interest and everything else, but they're asking for the penalty and interest to be refunded. I think that's, if the numbers add up that way, I think that's what Ezra was saying.
That makes sense, yeah.
Oh, I see, in their, in their statement down below.
Yeah.
In their statement of circumstances. I mean, if we want to, if we want to reach out again, that'd be fine, I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to, to abate the penalties and interests personally on it.
Your call.
Circumstances that we've already dealt with.
Are we ready for, do you have other items?
Nope, those are the only, those are the only two.
On this item?
Yep.
So I would move that we approve regular agenda item number one with the Gato taxes to be abated.
Two hundred dollars of...
Two hundred dollars off. And with the BMC West Corporation item to, to continue, to provide them an opportunity to somehow document, provide some additional information onto why this should be refunded and abated.
I'll second that.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to approve the tax, property tax actions contained with the, with the two, the two changes as stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That passes three zero. Well, somebody pulled ten.
You did, yeah. I asked for that to come off. Is that the next one?
It's the next one.
Okay, Dave, I just had a question, a clarification on this item number ten with Vineyard. I just wanted to make sure, my understanding of this is this doesn't really have much to do with the county or our plans, it's essentially, in order for them to be able to place something on the ballot within the city of Vineyard, we need to confirm that we don't have any intention to pass a countywide or put a, put a rap tax countywide onto the, into the ballot.
That's correct.
That's correct. So that's really, we're just kind of helping facilitate the procedure for the city of Vineyard?
That's right, and we've done that for numerous of the cities also in the county who made the same request.
Okay. Thank you, that was my own question.
Motion to be in order.
I move that we...
I move that we, go ahead, Tanner.
Move that we approve item number ten?
Second.
And a motion and a se- a second to adopt the resolution as stated in number ten, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That passes three zero. Okay, number nineteen is to adopt or deny an ordinance, as stated in number nineteen. This one's, this one deals with Section three dash fifty-one dash D, buildings and repairs and agriculture, equipment and so forth, vehicles.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Peggy Kelsey from County Development. As you recall, last year I was asked to take a look at the county code to do with business license exemptions and see about adding maybe some additional exemptions with the focus being on agricultural uses. We did do that, I presented an ordinance to you in January, which you approved, adding some additional exemptions. During that meeting, we also had you refer to the Planning Commission, the task of reviewing the land use ordinance for any conflicts. So now that we had, we have these additional exemptions, there were a couple in the land use ordinance that specifically required the applicant to attain a license. So we took that to the Planning Commission last month and those two are the ones that you talked about, it's sections, Utah County Land Use Ordinance, Section three fifty-one D and three fifty, three fifty-two D, those two uses. And so we took those before the Planning Commission, reviewed those, Planning Commission made a recommendation to you for approval with a four-zero vote to have the requirement of obtaining a business license removed.
Very good, thank you. That's what I wanted to hear.
One question that I have is, I just want to confirm, I think this is the case, but it's just, you know, the actions that we took earlier this year just removed the business license requirement, but at that time, I understood that there are still some land use requirements that would regulate and govern some of that activity.
Correct, correct.
And so now we're modifying some of the land use ordinances, but only to remove that business license requirement, not to change any of those regulatory structures that are already in place.
That's correct, that is correct. The applicant will still have to go through the procedures that are listed in Chapter Three, it's a supplementary requirement, so they have to meet all of these additional requirements. And as we kind of talked about before, both of those types of uses will still require fire safety inspections, so we will, our office will be going out at least yearly to kind of take a look at those where a business licensed official would not be going out.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, motion to be in order.
I move that we adopt the ordinance as stated in item number nineteen.
Is there a second?
Oops, sorry, I actually, I had it on mute, keep my background noise down. Peggy, thank you for your work on these and I'll second the motion.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance as stated in number nineteen on our regular agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That passes three zero. Number twenty is to adopt an ordinance submitting Chapter Nine, Fire Prevention and Protection of Utah County. As I read through this, I don't have, of course, any problems changing the chief to the fire marshal, that's, those are easy ones, easy ones to do.
Thank you.
There, there are others that I'd like to talk about, though, especially when we're talking about remodel and remodeling.
Okay.
And how that applies and the fifty percent, the fifty percent mark that you put in there.
Okay.
And how that, so if you could start with that and then I'd like to talk about the section you added in there with tents and membranes.
Okay.
Is that, is that it, too? Is that all that we had on the red line? I had a hard time going down through, when it's red line for me, I have to really concentrate to see the red, but...
And Commissioner Lee, if I might, perhaps I could ask also just to, can you give a little bit more of an intro even before you get into Commissioner Lee's of exactly kind of where the situations that this, these changes would apply?
Absolutely. Kirk Bertleson, Utah County Fire Marshal. And so to start, what started all this was the conversation that we've had about the yurts, and that's what got me into the code and reading, kind of reading more deep than I normally, just looking for certain elements of codes, you know, started me reading a little deeper and finding things that I thought were problems, and so that's what that did for all, except for the one that Commissioner Lee talked about, the fifty percent. So last year, we had two cabins up in South Fork area, Vivian Park, that were remodeled. Both cabins were remodeled to the point of all the exterior sheeting was taken off the building, all the sheet rock was taken off, wiring, plumbing, so basically both, both cabins were taken down to bare studs and a roof, which the roof was also replaced, by the way, but not the trusses. So just down to bare studs. At that point, and both of these cabins were built back, you know, years ago, and so they didn't have any fire suppression, they wasn't built to any, any of our new, what our code requires in the wildland urban interface, or the WUI that I, that we call it. And so that's what sparked this, was just to add, when a remodel hits that certain point, that it's such a big remodel, we should be, we should be allowed, or we should be bringing those up to code so that there's a fire suppression system in them in these high prone areas of wildland fires. And so that's what it's for, you know, the, our WUI code that we write is, you know, twofold, it's if the house catches on fire, we don't want the forest to burn down, and if the forest is on fire, we don't want the house to burn down. And so it's a twofold deal and when they're doing that big of expansion, or, expansion's the wrong word, when they're doing that big of remodel, we would like to have that added so that that code applies. Now, the code already applies, if you're adding to the footprint of the home up to fifty percent, once you go over fifty percent, you have to bring the rest of the home, the old part of that home, up to, up to code, but it didn't have any verbiage in there for just a remodel, meaning that if you, if you do a fifty percent or greater remodel on the home, then, then it needed to go up to code. And so as we've talked through this with the Building Department, Steve Kitchen has, has agreed that he will be the one that judges when that remodel reaches a fifty percent threshold or greater, so that it's not me just saying, ah, sprinkler, everything, because I think everything should have sprinklers, but, anyway, so, you know, to kind of keep that balance and fairness in there.
So if I can ask you a question on that, as I'm reading down through it on the fifty percent and I, and I get it, and I think that you're trying to find a balance in there to accommodate those who have already existing and they're maybe just wanting to remodel or just move a wall.
Right.
And, and then moving that wall, then if it, if it applied all the way through, then you'd have to put all the sprinkler systems in and so forth, which is very expensive.
Right, we don't want to do that.
And so I, I get that, so, but the one part that I was reading in there, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong with it, it says that if there is a remodel, that the new part will, will come up to, you know, come up to the code and the standard. So, so if we're, if we're, let's just say we're remodeling a bathroom.
Right.
And it does not hit even close to the fifty percent, maybe we're at ten percent of the structure. Are you wanting fire suppression?
Sure.
So...
So what it, what it says is involving, well, just to start it, number one, additions to remodels to existing non-conforming structures involving less than fifty percent expansion or remodel. So what we're talking about is a total, say you have a two-bedroom house that's got two bedrooms, two baths and a kitchen and a family room, and you're going to remodel one bathroom, one bedroom and the family room, that would maybe make it to that fifty percent, and that's when it would kick in and say, everything has to have sprinklers. It, it wouldn't be, if you was remodeling a bedroom or a bathroom, that wouldn't probably constitute, unless, of course, it was a three hundred square foot cabin.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, you still have...
So if we're forty-nine percent, though, then...
Forty-nine percent, we don't...
Forty-nine percent that we're remodeling, you're not saying has to come up to standard with the rest of it, okay.
Exactly, just if you go, if, just if you exceed that fifty percent, then that's when we want to bring it all up to code.
Okay.
Okay, is that good on that one?
Hmm.
All right, and then number two over there on the right side, because I read through this multiple times, studying for the yurt stuff, I realized that if you want to go camping in one of our canyons and you take your backpacking tent, this code doesn't allow it.
Right, you're actually...
And so I thought, man, we better, maybe better change that.
Against the ordinance to camp in Utah County.
Yeah, yeah, unless you guys want me to go up every time I see somebody in a tent and kick them out and make them put fire sprinklers in it, no, I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
And so, so that's why that was added.
Okay.
Just, just to allow for tents and stuff for temporary camping use.
So I, I would prefer that that's, that sentence says, this chapter shall not prohibit the use of tents or membrane structures, instead of, instead of putting in temporary and only use solely for recreational camping. And the reason why is, is because, yeah, when we put, when we put temporary in there or for recreational use or camping only, there are people who will throw a tent up for whatever reason, maybe they kicked out of their apartments and now they're living up there on, maybe on their own property, and, and they're throwing a tent up and they're in, they're in violation, they can't, they're in violation of, of code.
Right. And so the, the reason temporary is in there is because that's both in the building and the fire code, so that's a defined term in the building and fire code, so in the international codes. And so the temporary word means that it can't be erected in that location, on that location for more than a six-month period. And if, you know, if the county doesn't want to have that word in there, I understand that, but the, the international fire code and the building code would still regulate it.
Okay, then it, then it's really not needed to be in, in this.
Okay.
If we already have it regulated elsewhere.
Okay, so you, you want to strike temporary?
I'd rather, yeah, I'd like it to read, this chapter shall not prohibit the use of tents or membrane structures, period.
So, so I'm not, I'm not familiar with, with what's, well, so I have some fact pattern questions, but I also, just to follow up on a couple of things that have been said. I did not see in here, I see the number two addition, but is, can you, can anyone point me to where, under the existing code, a tent is disallowed?
You bet. If you back up in the code, if you back up in the code one page, at the top there, it says A, all of these structures will meet the following, automatic fire sprinkler systems.
Sorry, hold on, can you, I'm just...
Just if you go back, yeah, just, I've got a paper copy if you'd like it.
I'm on here, just, can you tell me what page or what section of the code?
You're on page eight, on the top left, under subsection A, and that's, that tells us basically that all new structures and structures are covered. Number one, automatic fire sprinklers. So what that means is if you set up a tent, right now at the current code, if you read the code, if you set up a tent, you now have to put fire sprinklers in it.
Is this deemed a dwelling?
It's, it's deemed a structure. So the definition of a structure, structure is anything built or constructed, period. And so a tent, and it even goes on in the, in Chapter Thirty-One of the fire code and the building code, in the tents and membrane structure section, tells you... tells you again that these are structures. And so that's why I'm trying to clean up our code, it's just because they are a structure and yet we're going to require them to have fire sprinklers, class B roofs, you know, on down, one hour firewalls.
Sure, they'll never comply with that, so they're essentially disallowed.
And so that's why it's not expressly prohibited saying, you can't have these, but it's just requiring a whole bunch of things that a tent or, or membrane structure would never be able to comply with.
And then can you give me direction on the definition of the wildland urban interface areas?
So the wildland urban interface areas are, uh, set up by the state and it's basically our canyons. Um, any, anything that's got a high fuel load, uh, that, that is, uh, a higher risk of wildland fires. And so all of our canyons, you know, our homes and cabins that are being built today are built to this code and-
But it would not include, obviously, designated camping sites?
No.
Right, so-
It, it wouldn't include that, but that's not exempted from our code. So that's, that's the only reason why I want this, you know, why I thought it needed to be put in there is that our code didn't have any exception for that, which it should, right? Uh, that's, m- my logic was, we, we shouldn't have that. And, and since the yurt conversation has been a, a topic for the last several months, uh, you know, way back into last year, that's what got me on this saying, oh, wait a minute, we don't even, we don't even allow for somebody to set up their temporary yurt and use it for a weekend and take it down and go home. The, the code doesn't allow it, so that's all-
Even at a campsite that they've, so, so-
Yes, anywhere in unincorporated Utah County, that's what this is for.
Well, there's, there's two issues, I mean, one is the structure, but that's another way to accept it, is have it be a geographic exception.
And I understand what you're saying and what my thought was, and it goes back to our yurt, uh, one, one example was, they own their property and they want to set up their yurt on their property. And I don't think, a- as the, on the fire side of it, I don't want to prohibit somebody from being able to go to their own property and camp on their own property. And that's what this does if they're not in something that's got fire sprinklers and all these other things.
So that was my factual question, is can you explain where from an enforcement, uh, perspective, this has been an issue?
It's never, it's never been an issue, we've never tried to enforce this. And I gotta be honest, I would have a hard time if you told me you wanted me to enforce it.
Right.
It's just not, this is just not one of those things, I'm just trying to clean up language, uh, you know, understand. I don't think this is a big change to, to our life at all right now, because it's not something that we would be actively going out, oh, there's a tent, I gotta go kick those guys out, that's not what we're doing, that's not what I'm looking for.
Sure, but you did mention at the start that you would, that you had a, that the yurts kind of kicked off this conversation.
Yurts kind of kicked off the-
So explain what you mean by that.
Okay, so, uh, so you know what a yurt is, it's got a wood structure with a tent, uh, membrane over the top of it all. In the building code, if that is set up on a platform, on a deck, which most yurts are built that way, that becomes a permanent structure, just like your cabin. So if Commissioner Lee bought a piece of property and you bought one next door to him and he built a cabin and he is required to do all of these things to keep his cabin safe from the wildland fire and to keep the wildland safe from the cabin fire, and you wanted to put up your yurt, is it right for us to, and it's going to be a permanent structure, understand where I'm going, not a temporary structure used for camping, but a permanent structure, shouldn't it be required to have the same kind of, kind of enforcement on that property? Because if you burn down your yurt and it starts a wildland fire that burns down his cabin, did, did we do, or, you know, was, was we being correct in how we administered our codes and, and stuff?
So that's why you have come with the language of-
Yeah, of temporary, that's why I want temporary, you know, that verbiage in there is because I want it clear to people that you can't set up your yurt and just leave it forever, it's gotta be temporary in use.
And, but to explode, to expose a little bit more of the, um, the craziness with this, if we don't build it up on a structure and we just put it on a pad, then it's not considered a structure anymore. And, and we could, we could actually pull it from one side to the other every six months and still being confor- and confor- conform with, with what's going on.
Yeah, so, is, just to, just to clarify, either way it's considered a structure, so it's always considered a structure. It's just temporary or permanent are the key words. And you're absolutely right, if we set it on a pad on the ground, if we set it on the dirt, erected it on the dirt, it's a temporary structure at that point, it is. But once it, that means also in the codes that it can't exceed being set up there for more than a hundred and eighty days, for that six months. But yes, it can be taken down, moved somewhere else and be set back up and it's just fine.
So you could put it, you could, you could put it up for six months.
Mm-hmm.
And put up a skid plate and then, and then skid it over somewhere else and now it's not in the same area and so you're, I mean, it, it, the thing is, is we go into kind of insanity with-
I understand what you're saying, and I, and I think the building code actually requires that it leaves that parcel, but, uh-
No.
No, am I wrong?
Not from what, 'cause we had this conversation with, with Steve and others.
With Steve, okay.
Yeah.
And I thought I remembered Steve saying it did, but I, yeah, I don't, I don't know on that, 'cause I'm not a building code junkie.
Who else was in there, I think Ben was in there, I don't know if he's here though.
I, I understand what you're saying, um-
'Cause to me a yurt is, is kind of a glorified tent in, in many respects, you know, I, I understand.
And, and I agree with that.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I-
But, but it is, it is more of a structure that can be set up and left permanently. You know, I mean, you, you look around the state, at the state campgrounds and things like that where they have yurts set up and they leave them up for years.
Yeah, I see some of the army tents set up and they can stay up for a long time too.
Yeah, I'm sure they can, yeah.
And they have everything in them.
Yeah, they're pretty tough, yeah.
Even stoves.
Yep, so, yeah, and, and unfortunately or fortunately, the army is exempt from my fire code.
Yeah, but it's still a tent.
Yeah, but it's still a tent, yeah.
Purchase that.
Right. So, any other questions for me on?
I, I just wanted to tell you thanks for working on this and, and trying to clean this up. I know it can get into the weeds pretty quickly, but I think the underlying spirit of what we're doing here is moving us in the correct direction. Uh, we're trying to be less restrictive, allow people more flexibility, allow them the opportunity to have these temporary yurts, to use them for camping or other activities that, that's consistent with our enforcement pattern and I think that, that the cleanup is a good start.
Thank you.
One more question is, can, is there, is the temporary term defined-
It is.
-within this code that we're looking at?
Uh, boy, I can't answer that. It's defined in the fire code as well as the building code. And our code isn't done alphabetically, so I would have to go through and read everyone. But I don't think it is, and I'm not seeing it here. So it would just be defined in the fire code and the building code both as a hundred and eighty days.
And I don't know, Peggy, you're speaking to that or Rob or anyone wants to speak about how we would prefer to do that?
Yeah, Peggy Kelsey from Community Development. I just wanted to interject just really quickly that we've got different codes, you've got building, you've got fire. We also have our land use ordinance and land use ordinance restricts camping for forty-five days annually. So we have that in the play with that too. And, um, building code does, um, define temporary as a hundred and eighty days. So a structure that's located, um, in one location for a hundred and eighty days. And I thought it did have something to do with the parcel, but I could be wrong and I don't have that in front of me and Steve is not here too to help interject, but we do have a few different between building and fire and our land use ordinance.
Okay.
I, I would suggest that we add that definition so that it does read the same. I think, uh, under nine dash one, uh, dash, uh, three, there are definitions. It's the definition section and, uh, temporary use definition could be plugged into that so it would read consistent with the building code.
Okay.
Uh, this is Robert Moore County Attorney's Office, also, just so you know, I think part of the reason why they include the word temporary is trying to avoid any conflicts so that this chapter of our county code does not conflict with building codes and fire codes. Because if a structure is going to remain longer than six months, then it has to meet all of the codes, as if it was a cabin. This, this scenario that was, that was given by Kurt was you have a cabin here and a yurt here. If that yurt's going to remain longer than six months, then it has to meet all the fire codes and building codes, et cetera. The idea here is that if it's not going to remain longer than six months, that it, it ought to be exempted from some of those things. And that's what we're trying to do here. If you were to modify the language, take out the temporary nature of that language, now you're kind of creating a little bit of a conflict between our county code, which says you can have it, and the fire codes, which says you can't after six months without meeting the fire code requirements. And, and that's why it's, I think it is necessary to keep that language in there as it is temporary.
Wait a second, I, so you're saying that it would conflict with our, with our, our building codes, our, our, our camping codes?
Well, right now, right now, fire code and building code both say after a hundred and eighty days, um, i- it's a permanent structure. Has to be treated as a permanent structure. And as a permanent structure, it has to meet all building and fire codes. And a yurt may not, uh, we, we don't, obviously without looking at each yurt individually, we don't know that. But, um, in this situation, if we were to pull and, and, and take out the word temporary here, you would be suggesting that yurts would not have to meet any requirements of this chapter.
Well, but you still have them under, under the others.
That's my point, that's my point, is now you're gonna say you don't meet this chapter, but yet, um, the house next door still does and they still have to meet fire code and building codes, but-
After, after a time period.
Correct, and that's, that's my point is that-
So why don't we put the time in there then?
Yeah, that's what they suggested and I agree, that we, we ought to include that in the definition section.
Because the state's going to be looking at this on, on the building code side.
They are, they are.
So, the state, the state's going to be looking at it?
You know, yurts are kind of a newer, uh, not a newer, but, but they are, a little bit newer of a, of a animal and a lot of jurisdictions aren't sure how to handle them yet.
Right, I mean, and there's conflict in the state.
And there's conflict in the state, that's right.
All, all across, you know, in different parts of the state on where this has, and with, the problem is, is that we have a blend between the tents, which everyone ignores and just says whatever, you know? And then also we have this other structure called a yurt now, which is, is a go-between, if you want to call that. And that's, that's where we're having the conflict.
But it's, but it's, that's part, partially an undue conflict. In the building code, a yurt is defined as a tent. And so it's still, it's still a tent, this is, please understand-
I, I agree with you, I totally agree.
Because, I know, this is, this has been so confusing and so hard because, because it bounces you in so many places, you know?
Right.
The building code and fire code both have a separate, sep- three separate chapters on tents and membrane structures.
Right.
And then it's at the end of all that that it says in a yurt, it's a tent, and it's like, okay. So membrane structures are the blow-up, big things, stuff like that, uh, that are air-supported, that's, that's where that confusion lies. Anything that has a structure and cloth over the top of it, that's a tent.
Right.
Okay.
And I, I totally agree, and that's the reason why it gets-
It's so hard.
That's the reason why I want to make sure that we're, you know, we're at least keeping it straight all the way through, because I know the state's going to be looking at it and, and if they change, then it'd be easier for us to just come back. But if we, if we define it as Dave says or whatever on, on, on that, instead of putting temporary, 'cause temporary could be what?
Yeah, we should define temporary.
Five days.
Yeah, we'll-
In somebody's mind.
Yeah, we'll get that added.
So we can, if you want to continue this, um, and then we could bring it back.
I know Kurt's been working on this thing forever, is there any way we can, I mean, is it all right to-
It's not a problem, absolutely. I like coming to see you guys.
Okay.
Very seldom by mail.
Good for you, thank you.
Okay, a move that we continue-
For two weeks, is that good?
For two weeks.
Second.
Number twenty.
And a motion and a second-
Second.
I got a motion and a second to continue item number twenty for two weeks, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That passes three zero. All right, um, that, that is all of our agenda items. We do need, uh, number twenty-four, twenty-six and twenty-seven, we can strike twenty-five.
Uh, I think it's my week, Tanner, I'll move that we strike regular agenda number twenty-five.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to strike agenda item number twenty-five, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That passes three zero.
I'll move that we approve and set a date, time and location for the closed meetings listed in regular agenda items number twenty-four, twenty-six and twenty-seven for today's date at the current location immediately following the conclusion of business.
Second.
I got a motion and a second, uh, to approve and set a date, time and locations for item number twenty-four, twenty-six and twenty-seven. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That passes three zero. We have, we have no work session items, is there any general public comment? Being that we'll move into our closed meetings.